Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting for the Beaver Creek City Council on July 12th. And before we hit the agenda this evening, the Vice Mayor Adams has proclamation he would like to issue.
Good evening. Welcome, and we're glad you're here. We have a special day coming up at the end of this month in Beaver Creek. It's going to be the Lemonade Day, and this time I'd like Eric Aliano and representatives from Green Bucks to come up. We have a proclamation for you guys. So I'll read this to you, and then I'll ask you to speak a little bit, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Okay. Whereas the youth of Beaver Creek are the future, and it's vital to provide them with the educational opportunities necessary to achieve their full potential, and whereas one such opportunity is Lemonade Day, a national program offering youth the chance to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking through the act of building and managing a lemonade stand. And whereas, by inspiring our youth with the spirit of enterprise and teaching them basic business and entrepreneurial skills, we can help them to become successful contributing members of the community. And whereas since Lemonade Day began in 2007, over 1 million kids have participated, and it has grown into a national entrepreneurial program to teach youth how to start, own, and operate their own business through the act of building and running a lemonade stand. By following the spend, save, and share philosophy, youth learn to set goals, develop a business plan, establish the budget, seek investors, provide customer service, and give back to their community. And whereas participation in Lemonade Day demonstrates to young people in Beaver Creek that they can meaningfully contribute to the prosperous future for themselves and their families, and they can achieve things if they simply set their mind and energy toward their accomplishments. And whereas the city of Beaver Creek commends River Valley Credit Union, organizers, volunteers, and participants of Lemonade Day, and extends best wishes to all for a successful and rewarding experience. And whereas the city of Beaver Creek would like to commend Green Bucks for their sponsorship of Lemonade Day. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, I, Don Adams, Vice Mayor, do hereby recognize July 31st, 2021 Lemonade Day in the city of Beaver Creek. I'll give that to you.
Well, Vice Mayor and Green Bucks and the whole council, thank you guys so much. We are so excited to bring this to Beaver Creek. Green Bucks, thank you for your help, your participation, your sponsorship of the city prizes that will be given here in Beaver Creek. One child here in Beaver Creek will get a Nintendo Switch for having the best tasting product. Another one will get a Nintendo Switch for having the best decorated stand. And a lot of kids, one way or the other, are going to learn a lot, they're going to earn a little bit of money, they're going to become little entrepreneurs, and hopefully one day take that on to having much larger companies, and maybe get in a business loan with River Valley Credit Union. So, thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Well, we're just happy to be a part of it, and our secretary, her son was self-employed, so he was an entrepreneur, and this just really touched all of us for that, so we're glad to be a part of it, and thanks for having us today.
And on top of that, Chick-fil-A is giving a $1,000 scholarship to the overall winner, so.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we also now, before we get started, we have a special introduction by the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a special introduction for me and for us and for the city. I'm going to introduce to you Officer Christopher Brownlee. He is our newest community engagement officer in the program that you folks approved through Chief Dennis Evers back in 2018. And Chris comes to us with a great amount of passion and excitement and just overall zest for this position. He was hired with our agency back in 2012 in November. He has a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice from the University of Dayton, and he's had numerous awards in his time here. He's Mad Top Cop Award of Excellence in 2015, and also that year he received a Green County Consortium on Domestic and Sexual Violence Excellence in Law Enforcement Award. He is our coordinator for the Explorer Program here in Green County, representing the city of Beaver Creek. He's a mentor with the BIGGS with a Badge Program and the Volunteer at Victory Project, a Dayton-area mentorship program, and he's had also various letters of recognition and commendation in his tenure here with the agency. So I am excited, we've already had a successful safety town, he's quickly realized the energy it takes to work with little ones for a whole week, two sessions, so he did an outstanding job with that. We had numerous wonderful comments, the course filled up so quickly, and it's just, I'm excited, it's been a great selection, and we're looking forward to many things coming here in the very near future. I'd like to introduce to you Chris Brownlee.
All right.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, Chief, and just say, August 3rd is our National Night Out in our open house, and I hope to see all you guys there. It's going to be a lot of fun. I'm going to have Vice Mayor Don there operating Willy Will, so if you definitely want to come see that. Other than that, I'm just excited to do this job for you guys, so any questions? Do I do that, questions, comments, anything like that?
Do you want to come back and talk to us in about six months?
We could do that. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate everything you do. Thanks, Chief. All right, let's call this meeting to order, please. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bales is absent. Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Dur?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. So here a motion.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Bales.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Bales. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll turn it over now to Councilmember Garcia for a pledge.
Thank you. If you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all please remain standing for one moment for a brief opening prayer. Lord, we pray that you guide us in our deliberations during this meeting, so that we may conduct ourselves and perform our duties in direct accordance with the principal laws of our city, state, and country. We beseech your blessing, so that we may always work in the best interests of our residents and our city. Amen. Thank you all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Any corrections or changes?
Will we approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes, we'll start with June 21st, a work session. Any changes? Motion?
Move to approve the June 21st work session minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for June 21st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions? Motion carries. Next are the minutes from the June 28th regular scheduled meeting. Any changes?
Will we approve the June 28th regular meeting minutes, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the June 28th minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now we have another special guest. We have a pre-scheduled speaker this evening, and it is Maury Heidi, who is Congressman out of Congressman Turner's office, so, Maury, welcome.
Thank you.
How are you tonight?
I'm excellent.
All right.
It's good to be out.
Fantastic.
And about. I'm Congressman Turner's District Outreach for Green County and Fayette County, so I get around, and I've got eyes and ears to the ground, so I'm happy to be here. Tonight, I want to bring to your attention the COVID-19 funeral reimbursement program. This was part of the legislation passed by the federal government in December of 2020 that included this language where people who lost loved ones after July 20th of 2020 to COVID-19, they could apply for reimbursement of funeral expenses, up to $9,000. So this is a very big deal. FEMA is the agency that's handling the applications, and the applications start with a phone call. So you gather all your information together, and you make a phone call to FEMA, and this information is on the flyer that I handed out, and they take all the information from you, and then they talk about what you need to do, keeping in mind that not everyone has a printer and a scanner and all of that. So you can mail it, that, you know, just follow their directions. Be patient when you're calling FEMA, because the lines are very busy. As of June 15th, there have been 7,051 applications in the state of Ohio, just in Ohio, and that's equivalent to $13 million, just in the state of Ohio. So 2,700 have been approved. So you just need to be patient when you're calling FEMA and getting on their board to register. There's frequently asked questions, and it also shows what is included in the expenses that are covered. You need receipts. If you don't have receipts, go get receipts. And there is, a couple of people have asked questions about a death certificate, not necessarily saying COVID. And I don't know how to do this, but I know it can be done. You go to the medical examiner, examiner, and you ask to get that death certificate amended, because this is important. And, you know, as hard as this is to even talk about, this, people that have lost their lives to COVID, this is something that impact financial jobs being lost, this is something that the federal government wanted to do to help people kind of pull their lives back together.
Very good. Are the funeral homes which have most all the information that they would need, I would think? Are they fully informed about?
Congressman Turner sent this flyer to all the churches and all the funeral homes in the district, so we covered them. I'm also out on the campaign talking about it, because I can't believe how many people didn't know about this, and that's okay. I mean, this isn't something that you would necessarily know. I also can tell you that it takes about two and a half to three months to get your money from the application, so just be patient with that as well. But, yeah, it will happen. So I've been monitoring one that applied in April, right when they first started taking applications, and about two weeks ago, they got their money. So it took about two and a half months.
No, every little bit helps sometimes when you're faced with a situation like that.
Absolutely. Yes, that's the idea, absolutely.
Any questions?
Okay.
Anyone comment?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
For coming in tonight, thank you. All right, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. We'll start off with ordinance 21-12.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 21-12, and ordinance amending the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175 of the city of Beaver Creek zoning code.
Thank you. All right, have there been changes to this since we heard it last time?
Evening, Mayor, members of council. On page, while it's in your packet, I'm not sure exactly what page in the packet, but in the zoning code portion of the packet, it's on 197 and 198. It's for the drive-through service establishments. Based on discussion last month, at the first reading, we changed it from City Council and/or Planning Commission to Planning Director when it comes to reserves or right to require more stacking above and beyond what's needed. So that was the only change that we made based on one from last month.
No changes to the small structures?
There wasn't anything specific that we were, that we thought to change, so we kept it in as presented the first time.
Okay. All right, discussion?
What'd you do on the small structures?
Well, what we're proposing is the allowance of accessory dwelling units in A1, R1A, R1B, RAA. And there's a list of regulations, a list of, I guess, parameters by which they'd be allowed, but they can't be more than 600 square feet, no more than 16 feet tall, so they'd be...
They'd still be separated, or be attached to the house?
Well, if they're attached to the house, they're no longer accessory dwelling. I mean, if they're attached by a breezeway or attached to the house, they'd be a granny flat.
What are you recommending?
We're recommending moving forward with the accessory dwelling units.
With a separate dwelling unit?
Yeah, as an accessory dwelling unit. And one of the requirements, and it'd be, it's the bigger one, is that they be architecturally compatible with the existing residential, so that if you live in a brick house, or, you know, stone, or, you know, it can't be just a shed that somebody puts in the backyard and proposes to somebody to live in, it has to be architecturally compatible. I've looked at these in other cities and other, the construction of them, and, you know, they're not cheap, you know, $100,000, $120,000 when you talk about plumbing and electrical and getting everything in there.
So you still want a separate structure on the property?
Up to one, as an accessory dwelling.
Rather than having it attached to the house?
They're already allowed to be attached to the house as another wing on the house, just not allowed to have a separate address or a separate, you know, suite address, and these wouldn't be allowed either. Couldn't have a separate suite or a separate mailing address, so that they can't be used as a separate dwelling unit. The intention is to be an extension of the existing house, so that if there's a family member or something that needs to live close by but wants to have their own space, that's the intent of these.
Randy, I do have a question. If that's the intent, is the intent not to be, so I've done some research on these, and I was seeing that a lot of cities are using them primarily for, I mean, the granny pod concept, is that, you know, we have an aging community, and we'd like to have our loved ones close by, and, you know, perhaps not a retirement home. But I see that a lot of cities are placing requirements that the person must be a primary caregiver, and that there has to be some type of limiting factor. So, for example, one of the residents can't wash themselves, or they need the assistance, they have Alzheimer's, they can't live on their own. Is that something that you had taken into consideration by chance?
Well, we didn't want to limit it in case it was, you know, their adult children needed to live there, or, you know, some, doesn't necessarily need physical care, but, you know, is not really equipped to live on their own independently somewhere else. And that's certainly something we can add in, if that's, and take a small step in that direction, if that's the way we want to go. I don't see the harm in adding that, so that we can move forward conservatively and slowly.
Well, and I know it would add another complexity, because a lot of the requirements, at least in the cities that used that, you know, required them to remove the structure within six months of the caregiving ceasing, and so I think that would add even more issues.
That would be a pretty big expense and really prohibit, it would...
Disincentivize.
Right. People really wouldn't want to build it, especially if they're not sure somebody's going to live there for two years, five years, 10 years. You know, it's a pretty big investment to get rid of a few years down the road.
Right.
All right, well, that leads up to, and I'm just going to jump in here, but the, what's the minimum size?
There is no minimum, sorry.
600.
Yeah, there's no minimum, but, I mean, they have to be equipped with, in the definition, they show they have to have, I'm trying to make sure I get it right.
That's all right.
They just have to have a kitchen and, you know, bedroom facility.
I understand that, but these tiny, some of these tiny houses are 300 feet, 200 and some feet.
Sure, yeah.
It's just as glorified shed. So that's one issue. The other issue is that, that I have, is simply that we don't have any qualifying factors. We don't have, other than location and size, the qualifying factor of, is it a caregiver? Is it a family member? Is the, when the college kid leaves home, who's going to live in it? Can they rent it out?
Yeah.
Is it, you know, I think they, I think we are opening a door that we don't want to open, at least not just yet, and not without really defining some of these issues. I understand, and again, I don't see, quite honestly, if you're going to make it such that it's going to cost that much money, I don't, can't understand why somebody would spend that same amount of money and attach it
Right.
To the house that's there. Even with a breezeway, I mean, it's almost going to be, it has to be close enough to get a 50-yard, 50-foot setback in the rear. You're going to have to be close enough to your house that a breezeway is not very much.
Right.
And so I don't quite understand that if people, if you expect people to spend $100,000 plus on these units, there's, I can't see how it's a problem now, because all you have to do is attach with a breezeway. Now it becomes part of that single-family structure, though, and, you know, there can be some, if we had complaints and they were renting that out, we wouldn't allow that under a single-family structure. So we have some control. So I just, I just think there is way too many issues that have not been fully thought through. I know, I'll be quite honest with you, I didn't think, I didn't think it would go any further, and so I didn't do as much research as I probably should have, because I'd have dug up more. But I really think this needs to come out, if and when we want to take it up. We can always add it back. We can add this at any time. I just, and maybe it's something that, you know, we want to talk a little more about at the, at our retreat, it's just yet this month, if that's what you decide you want to do. But my position is simply, and that's just one person, is that I believe it should be removed from the ordinance tonight, in order for this ordinance to move forward. And I think the ordinance does need to move forward because of certain things that are in it that we need to cover. So instead of holding up the entire ordinance
Pull it out.
By tabling it, I would, I would be inclined to want to just pull it out. So now you have something to talk about.
Fine with me, I agree, I think it'll be attached to the house.
So just for clarification, if we remove it, there is nothing in place right now, well, I guess, no one could go and put one of these on their property, essentially?
They came with a breezeway.
Yeah, right.
With a breezeway, but not in the manner in which the granny pod is described?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that is correct. You cannot have a detached accessory dwelling unit under current code.
Yeah, personally, I don't see a major rush. I think we can take our time and get some definitions in order, because I had a question on, I like the definition on page 68, on kitchen and bathroom facilities, but my question was whether that definitely includes electric and plumbing, because hypothetically, what is the definition of a kitchen? And so, I don't know whether it sits, okay, that's maybe a question for council, but, you know, sort of things of that nature that would fit. But I don't think we're in need of a rush on this, so I'm happy with pulling this out and moving forward.
I was going to say, based on those comments, specifically as you said, how do we define a kitchen? My first thought was, I agree with Mr. Mayor, that it would probably be better to discuss this at our upcoming work session. I think it would give us more time to flesh out the details and see how we can really kind of dig into it a little bit more, based on the comments raised tonight.
And I agree with that. I was, I've thought about this, I didn't do the research, but I got to thinking about having a structure extra on your home, and we talked about Airbnbs before, it easily could become one of those, and I think we need to have, if we do go through with this, we have to have some, I think, some more structure around how we define what can be there, and how we can handle it. So I agree, I think we should, if we can take that out, take it out, discuss it, and then come back to it.
Want to ask?
I do see the demand in the community, I'm hearing about it more and more, so Randy, I think you're ahead of the game, you're seeing things, commend you on that, but I think we can, we can do with chatting.
Well, it's part of that discussion, when you're having that, if you're hearing it, because I do not. Everybody I've talked to said, "You're doing what?"
I haven't either, and I was going to ask, is it primarily due to caregiver situations, or is it because of Airbnbs, or both?
It's the issue you raised earlier with Alzheimer's and taking care of elderly parents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think...
So I am hearing it a little bit, not a lot, though, so another question is, what is the demand in the community?
And of course, way it's worded now, you can't do it on a modern lot. Anything that's been built since we've been a city, you don't have room to put one anyway. Now, you can put an attached one, though.
Right.
That's the beauty of it, you can, but, so anyway, if I'll entertain a motion to remove this section.
So move, Your Honor.
Second. What is the section number, Randy? I think there's actually several sections, mother-in-law suites in the definitions, then we have the section, the provision under agricultural.
Yeah, it would be in the definition section, in section 0...
Motion should be pretty broad.
30, 031.
Not just remove anything.
It would be those sections.
For the purpose of the additional dwelling.
All right. So I do have a motion and a second, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. All right, so now we still have the remainder of this ordinance, ordinance 21-12. This is the second reading, and I'm not sure who sponsored this.
Motion to approve it. It's on to the next reading.
No, this is the final reading for everything else. This is, all right, so I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Let me stop here, do we have to amend formally, amend anything, or?
Well, it's a mo...
A motion to, you've already voted, did you not vote on the motion to amend? You didn't.
Well, to remove.
To remove. So now it is a motion to approve as amended.
As amended, all right.
Motion to approve the amended.
All right. As amended. As amended.
As amended.
Same second. So I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-12 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next is ordinance 21-13.
This is a second reading of ordinance 21-13, and ordinance amending Chapter 158 zoning code of Beaver Creek codified ordinances to add a new section 158.122, Live Sex Act, businesses prohibited.
Thank you. Any changes since the last reading? Everything same? Any discussion? None, Mayor. No changes, all right.
Move to approve ordinance 21-13.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-22.
This is resolution 21-22, a resolution approving proposed amounts for inclusion in the 2022 tax budget for submission to the Green County Auditor.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is an exciting time, this starts the 2022 budget process, and we're always excited to get this in the mail for us to fill this out. This is required by the ORC. Green County Auditor sends out a projection of our property taxes, the local government tax, and basically, they convene a Green County Budget Commission to review their submissions from all the municipalities and townships and villages. With the pandemic, they've kind of waived that requirement of all of us getting there and meeting with them and going over our budgets, and they've come up with a form that they wanted us to complete for this process. And so they've exercised that right to waive that specific requirement, which included a little bit of advertising too on our part that was waived also, so... So this is kind of a new process that they started last year and they carried it over this year. The document, really, what they're trying to do is determine whether or not the city needs all the levies that we have on the books, and basically that's their premise here is to look at the revenue coming in based on their estimated property tax projections and determine whether or not we need that money. It's obvious that we do, and whether or not some jurisdictions have too much fund balance, which we definitely don't. So that's what this process does. Again, it starts off our process by going through this, and then we develop our own operating budget, capital budget, send that out to the directors, they'll be reviewing it in August and September, then you know the process then. We'll sit down and go over that with them, and then in November, we'll bring that forward to you, and then December, we approve that budget for the following year. So but this this formal process required by the ORC is the official start of the entire program, so be happy to answer any questions. The form's pretty much the same as it was last year. There's no surprises really, other than I thought it was interesting that they had projected the local government fund that we get, about $76,000, it's less than what we got this year, which is interesting in itself, but since, again, the state had indicated that they were going to be increasing that a little bit or keeping it the same, somehow our percentage dropped from last year to this year, and so we're going to lose, according to them, right now, $76,000, but.
We need to check into that, see if that's our local counties formula that's causing that.
Well, then that's what it is, so I didn't want to point the fingers at anybody.
You didn't want to get the hair up my neck, huh?
We'll certainly be revisiting that whole issue here shortly, so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks a lot. Any questions? All right, I'll comb my hair back down.
Motion to approve resolution 21 dash 22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21 dash 22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21 dash 23.
This is resolution number 21 dash 23. It's a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing recommendation to accept the fifth amended joint chapter 11 plan of reorganization of Purdue Pharma LP in the United States Bankruptcy Court for the Southern District of New York, case number 19 dash 23649.
Mr. McHugh, is that yours?
Yes, that is, Mayor and Council. This this Purdue Pharma has been an ongoing matter for probably about 20 months, let's say two years, with a six-month mediation among the jurisdictions. What this if council proposes or council accepts this, the plan is that there'd be up to $5 billion would go into a fund, a national opioid trust, and then that would be other portions will be paid off, but at some point, Ohio will get approximately 4.3% where the sixth state, based on the parameters of of basically the impact of opioid addictions and and the deaths and everything that went with it. So the intent of this is to provide funding to for to the state, which then will go to the local jurisdictions that accept this plan. As a practical matter, it's probably impractical to really try to litigate this separately, so there's that, and clearly it was either go in bankruptcy or else it was just going to be litigation, which would bankrupt ultimately any money to anyone, so that's the that was really kind of the plan here. So perfect, no, but it is a, you know, an opportunity maybe to receive some money back on on that would be used for drug drug education and the programs of that nature. The exact parameters, I can't tell you because that has yet to be designed. That's where a lot of this, you know exactly how much money, I can't say, and I can't say what all the parameters are going to be because, again, they're working through this and and, you know, the plan itself is 600 pages, so I mean, I have what a seven, eight-page summary, which goes into a lot of detail, but the plan itself is voluminous.
Mr. McHugh, and Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, I believe I may need to abstain from this, so I don't know if I need to be removed for the conversation portion by council or if I can remain, but I will not be able to vote on this matter this evening.
Do you? Okay.
Is it something that you want me to just kind of head out in the back for and then come back?
Probably so.
That's fine, other than your explanation, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I can, okay, yes, yeah.
All right, we'll say, I hope it's not distributed the same as the local government fund.
Sure changed.
Yeah, that I I don't know how to comment on that because I I don't know. But as a practical man, I don't know that there's a lot of choice.
Sure, no, I agree.
So I think it's, like I say, what what the city may ultimately receive, it really is unknown, but the purpose and intent of receiving the funds certainly would be a good thing. I mean, it would provide funding to the police department to provide for drug education and whether it be for drug enforcement, I don't know that at this point. Again, the parameters aren't set. Yeah, there could be some of that, yeah.
Yeah, but it's just a one-time shot, so you don't want to get it into operations.
No, 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 it can't be used for general operations, no. That at least that appears right now to be unless it's changed, but unless they change it, but right now, no, that's not the intent.
Mr. McHugh, a couple of questions, if I may, and thank you for your work on this. So in terms nationally, I've seen that 15 states have passed this. Are we part of that larger package?
Well, the the states themselves are parties
Sure.
to this, and then within the states, the local, well, within the bankruptcy plan, there were the hospitals were were potential claimants, there were a lot of different classes, and we fell into the cities fell into cities, townships, counties fell into sort of the local jurisdictions. And so, you know, we were a separate class, but the the money will actually go to the state, then the state will, the state attorney general was really the principal party for the state was is to then create a plan, and if that plan doesn't work, then then there's a fallback plan in the plan itself, this 600 pages.
Sure.
So.
So it tends to be forward-looking rather than backwards-looking in terms of the damage done by oxygen.
I think it'll be, you know, it will be somewhat backward-looking in the sense that it very likely will be based upon probably population, I I think will be one of the criteria to determine, because in some cases it'll be pretty difficult to, but again, that's the plan that the AG is going to need to come up with, but I would think that population will be a factor.
But not necessarily opioid deaths or impact on emergency services, things of that nature?
I'm sure that will be a factor, but I cannot say, you know, again, without the plan being created yet, I'm not sure what, but, you know.
Each state will decide how they're going to spend it.
That's my understanding, yeah, with a fallback plan in the plan itself, if the states can't agree.
Yeah, just been trying to get a handle on all of this because it's it's massive.
Well, it it took them six months to mediate this, so that was that tells you itself that this was a massive undertaking, but, you know, versus the the idea here, though, it's sort of interesting, they've kind of created this ongoing entity, which is unique in the sense, because normally it would be a straight if it was a straight bankruptcy, you just liquidate everything, but there is some ongoing business of this company, so the idea is that the ongoing business can further support and pay for the damages created by the the addiction problem that was created, so.
Thank you.
Could the funds be distributed over a number of years or is it all at once?
I believe it's going to be a number of years, you know, it's going to take some time, yes.
Anyone else? All right.
I just I do want to say something, this is something that's very near and dear to my heart, I really hope that the city of Beaver Creek does see some income for this, drug addiction happens everywhere, and for me, it was very personal, I lost my brother to drug addiction, and so it's every community, every family, we aren't immune, so hopefully we can get some funding back to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve resolution 21 dash 23.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21 dash 23. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, our liquor permits, and Chief, I believe you're on the hot seat right now.
Thank you, and good evening again. This is a transfer of a liquor permit, it's a C2 permit for a business by the name of Agnes and Orson Two. The Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent notification to us requesting this transfer of their permit from Dayton, Ohio to 79 Plum Street down at the Green, and the record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the applicant shareholder for this request, and there were no issues, and we are recommending the application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you, Chief. All right, council time. Councilmember Duer, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to start by thanking Eric Galeano of River Valley Credit Union for Lemonade Day, already hearing some good feedback in the community, and I think encouraging entrepreneurship at a young age is such a vital part of continuing what has made the United States so successful for for many, many years, so thank you for the initiative. Also like to thank Chief for introducing us to Community Engagement Officer Chris Brownlee, what a wonderful asset to the community, so thank you for taking the time, Chief. Like to thank everyone for coming out for the parade and fireworks on July the 4th, it was a wonderful event, I thoroughly enjoyed it, big thank you to UES for and all of the sponsors there. And I'd like to highlight, the Chamber of Commerce has a Business Links Event on Thursday at 4:30 at the Clark State Facility on Pentagon Boulevard, 3775 Pentagon Boulevard, always a good opportunity to see what's happening in the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with a small business owner who is going to be moving into the Beaver Creek area, and they told me how wonderful the experience has been working with our city staff and planning commission, and they have another business, I won't say where, and they said it's been night and day working with the city of Beaver Creek, and I think it's just a testament to our amazing staff, that everything has gone so smoothly for them, any questions they have are answered very quickly, yes, Randy, I'm looking directly at you, but thank you, I know it's it's a team effort, and I know our staff does a phenomenal job, so I just wanted to kind of, you know, put that on the record of how great our staff is with welcoming new businesses to the area, so thank you for all of that. And then also, too, I'm going to steal a little bit of our city manager's thunder, but we do have a family recess event coming up this Wednesday, July 14th. I was able to go to the last family recess a few weeks ago, and it was a really big hit, so many people from the community came out, city barbecue came, they had some, I think Italian ice was there as well, so if you have an opportunity to come out and visit one of our neighborhood community parks, please do so. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo some of the comments made by Councilmember Duer, the 4th of July, I do want to thank everyone for coming out, it was just such a fabulous event, we had such a great time with the parade and the fireworks and seeing all the community together, it was just wonderful, and so I want to thank the community and thank staff for all of their help in organizing that. I also would like to recognize Lemonade Day, and I'd also like to thank Vice Mayor Adams for his assistance in helping get that to our community and getting the support. I think it's going to be an excellent event, and I am very excited to go and test different lemonade stands. I also attended the Red, White &amp; Brew event that was hosted at Fairfield Commons Mall this weekend, it was a spectacular event, much like the 4th of July, very, very well attended, and so we had a great time and just very excited to continue these events in our community. Last and certainly not least, it kind of piggybacks a little bit on what Councilmember Garcia had said, we have such an amazing staff, and I think that there are two individuals that I'd like to recognize tonight. Katie has been doing such a fabulous job with our videos, our public relations have just been astounding lately, and I, every time a new video is posted, I'm continually impressed, and so I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do for us. I also would like to recognize Ms. Melissa, she has been filling in for us and has been working extraordinarily hard, pulling double duty with her regular job and supporting us as clerk, and so I think she deserves a lot of thanks and a lot of recognition for all the time that she's put in to help us. So that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I would echo Councilmember Duer, Councilmember Garcia, and the Councilmember Schwartz, all their points I think were just exceptional and right to the point. I wanted particularly tonight to give caduce of our governor, and the reason being that he vetoed Senate Bill 113, which would have been a ton of grief for this council, that's a fireworks bill, that would have created chaos, in my personal opinion, and over 15 different holidays, it would have been a mess for the police department as well as for the fire department, so I just wanted to say thank you, Governor, for vetoing this bill. That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to offer my congratulations to Chris Brownlee, Officer Chris Brownlee, he's, I've worked with him a couple of times already on this and have in the past, he's an excellent choice for this position, I think he'll be an asset to the city of Beaver Creek and the police department, and he's really excited about it. The other thing is, he mentioned tonight, his national night out is coming up August 2nd, and I want everybody to try to get out and attend that August 3rd, I'm sorry, I say corrected, it'll be out here at the at the police department again, Chief? Yes. The time of the day?
Five to seven.
In the evening, five to seven.
Hope I got that right.
Six to eight. You know, maybe, I'm sorry I mentioned it this week. But no, start thinking about it, because it's always a lot of fun, you get to see the police department, talk to officers, see some of the things that they do, so it's a it's a good opportunity. And on Lemonade Day, I'm really excited to see Lemonade Day come to here in Beaver Creek, I think it's going to be a a big hit, I haven't heard how many people have signed up to to make their lemonade stands, but listening to Councilman Duer, people are talking about it, which is good, and Eric said tonight that they're going to meet their goal of the number of stands, so that's really good, and I know Officer Brownlee told me he wanted to be a part of that, too, so I'll figure out something to get him involved in that. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the John Bargat Insurance Company along with Mayor Stone, it was it was really fun to be there and see a young person, and I have to admit, John looks really, really young, to get out into our community and set up his own business, he's, it's exciting to see that. I too want to thank everyone for coming out to celebrate the 4th of July with us, I want to give a special thank you, though, to Kim Farrell and Aaron Harris, along with their 4th of July Committee for putting everything together, they did an outstanding job, and I think from what I could see, it went flawlessly. UES, you know, can't thank them enough for their support, it's it's really good to have businesses like that in the community that really support our community. And the last thing I want to talk about, not very not very long, but two days ago, I have now have a new great grandson, so. Corbin Eugene was joined us in this world, and, you know, it's one of those things, he's got my middle name, so he's obviously going to be a good kid. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, as you've heard, we had wonderful Independence Day celebration around the area, I had the pleasure to be invited to Xenia's fireworks on Friday, and then, of course, our wonderful fireworks and parade, and then, of course, Red, White &amp; Brew this past weekend, so I had my three fireworks displays, and so it's really nice to see the number of people, it doesn't matter what community you're in, that are out now, that are feeling so much better that they can be out, so that's the real encouraging part to all of that. Sunday's music in the park, we're giving Parks and Rec a little credit here tonight, and they did a fantastic job with the with the Independence Day celebrations, but they do a job all the time, and they, the last night, they had probably about their fourth Music in the Park at Laffino, and it goes on through August 8th, but. music in the park at Lefino, and it goes on through August 8th, but just little things like that that make a community a community, and so I enjoy getting to those. What else do I have on here? I think that just about covers it, and again, I acknowledge and I double down on everything that the council has already said, because it's all very true, and I do remember I had one more item, we were talking about our staff, and I think I sent you all a copy of the compliment I received from an individual about, for Jeff Mormon, just the little things that make a difference to people, and that is taking that one little extra, even a half a step to accommodate a citizen, and he felt so not well about it that he decided to give me a call and let us know, so, thank you to Jeff. And that is all I have, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, tonight, just a couple things, family recess, I think this was mentioned, but July 14th at Fox Run Park, and July 21st followed up at Summerfield Park, so 5:30 to 7:30, there is a free city barbecue, pulled pork sandwiches, of course, that's why quantities last, and some of these have been very well-attended, so, we can't, we appreciate city barbecue, but we can't feed the entire city, but Italian ice as well has been provided, and I think that has ran, they've had more than enough for that, and we thank the International Harvester Credit Union for being the sponsor. Next, children's concert, mentioning the concerts this Sunday, July 18th, from 5 to 6, at Lefino Park, Grange Hall, music will be provided by Jim McCutcheon, the Guitar Man, all music will be kid-friendly, and the little ones in the audience will be invited to come onstage and join in the fun, there'll also be lawn games and food trucks, so please join us this coming Sunday.
And there's an adult portion of that at 7.
At 7, right, yep. And Dare Camp, this is July 21st through 23rd, Camp Birch is, is in Yellow Springs, but for information on this Dare Camp, we, you know, we talked about the drugs tonight, Dare is one of those programs that is established as effective at hitting children while they're educating them, while they're young, impacting them then, so this is definitely a good program. So for information about this program, contact our Dare officer, which is Officer Wise Cup, at the Beaver Creek Police Department, 426-1225, and he'll be able to answer any more questions. And lastly, I did want to thank you, Councilwoman Schwartz, she brought up the, about the, I didn't even show it, there is a video out on our YouTube channel of, and I won't play the whole thing, but this is the kind of quality that Katie is bringing to us. You know, and it goes on for a couple minutes, but I encourage people to check out our YouTube channel or our Facebook page that this was posted on, and all our social media pages, but this is really something to be proud of, it shows the community being engaged, and they are ready to get out, and the crowds at Rotary Park for the 4th of July were unbelievable, I think the number of participants in the parade were great, and the streets were lined, they were lined up, so it was very good, thank you to staff, as mentioned, Kim and, and Aaron did a fantastic job, and all the park staff to pull this off, and the committee, 4th of July Committee, the volunteers we have, yeah, there's the crowd there, you just see them all waiting, it was a good time, so appreciate all the hard work that was put in by all, and by all the programming, it takes a, a lot more work outside of things to make it look like it's simple, when things look like it's simple, that means a lot of work went into it, so appreciate it, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. All right, next is citizen comment, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come forward, give us a name and address, and we would ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes.
My name's Toni Wright, I live at 434 Grand List Drive, and for context, about my concern and interest in Beaver Creek, my parents moved us here to Beaver Creek the summer before I was in fifth grade, I attended Fairbrook, Valley, Ferguson, and as a freshman, Ankeny, the first year that Ankeny was opened and graduated, along with my husband from Beaver Creek High School. We moved back to Beaver Creek in 1983, where we raised our three children, and our boys both also graduated from Beaver Creek High School. Two of them live in Beaver Creek, and my, both, both of my boys live in Beaver Creek, and my oldest son's children have been going to Beaver Creek schools since preschool. However, my oldest grandchild, my, my oldest son's son, does not want to go to Beaver Creek High School, he doesn't want to go to that large of a school, so he has applied and been accepted to Carroll, which he will start as a freshman this fall. So, that's my background in Beaver Creek, I also attend church with Don here in Beaver Creek since 1990. I love my community, it has changed very much over the years, actually, when my oldest son was getting ready to start high school, I was actually on the floor of my bedroom praying to leave Beaver Creek, because I did not want him being in that, either one of my boys being in that large of a school, and it's much bigger now, but God spoke to me very clearly and said, "I could do that, but I have a different purpose for you," and both of my boys obviously did graduate from Beaver Creek High School, and what he asked me to do was pray for my community, and so, that's what I started doing more than normal. And I actually, in 1994, started a ministry called the Beaver Creek Prayer Force, some of you have gotten notes from, from us, which we just started doing recently, thanking you and, and encouraging you that we are praying for you, we do appreciate your service to our community, and, and we are praying for you, as well as our schools and our churches and businesses, I actually have written down many businesses in our community, and we have been praying for those as well, so, that is, so you know my heart, okay, I love our community and I do appreciate you. But last week, I was, during my morning prayers, this thought came to me, and I just felt I needed to share it with you, okay, and the thought was, what if we incentivized our farmers as much as we incentivize builders and big businesses in our community, and even to bring new farmers in, or that type of thing. I love when I go down Beaver Valley and I see, my mind just went blank, starts with an S.
Seabentholzer.
Seabentholzer, so I have it written down here, I should be reading instead of just talking, Seabentholzer, I mean, they even grow trees, we bought two of them two years ago, because some of ours have died and had to be removed, so I love that, and I love that we've gotten more parks, and they've gotten so much better over the years, I do appreciate that, I remember thinking when my boys were little, Kettering Parks are so much better than Beaver Creek Parks, but that's not the case anymore, and I do appreciate that, and my grandchildren, I watched, I started watching my grandchildren, my, my one son asked me to quit work to watch my grandkids, what a blessing, and so, I've been to many parks throughout our community, as my grandchildren are now, yeah, they don't go to parks so much, but, but I, you know, so I do appreciate those things, the Lefino Park, my grandkids call it the fishy park because of the fish, those that, no, so, so, and I, I'm like, so, as I was praying, it's like, incentivizing farmers or even new ones to come, I was like, what if we had a Christmas tree farm? I have a lot of pine trees, not as many as I used to, Don can attest, but, so I know pine trees grow here, right, apple orchards, you know, what if we built a lake, and I just started thinking of all these things, green, and I remember, because we live just east of 675, and, and I, and I remember that where the green, where the green is, used to be a lot of trees, and between my plot, which was built in the 50s and 60s, used to be trees, and now there are houses and condos and medical buildings, and, instead of trees, and I, and I was thinking, as, as, as these thoughts came to me, is there some way that we could incentivize these things, because Bill, the, the houses are taking a toll on our schools, and all of these things are taking a toll on homeowners, where taxes are concerned, and so, you know, all of these things started coming to me, and I was like, you know, trees are good, and I was like, they absorb CO2, removing, storing carbon while releasing oxygen back into the air, in one year, an acre of mature trees absorbs some amount, same amount of CO2 produced when you drive your car 26,000 miles. Now, I'm not a tree hugger, but I love people, and people need oxygen, and trees help with that, so, these are just thoughts that I just felt like I needed, I told Don, I need to share my two cents, what you do with it is, of course, up to you, and whether you do anything with it or not, I still love you and I will still be praying for you, okay, so thank you.
All right, thank you for your input.
Thank you, Chair.
And, all right, and just so you'll know, we're not trying to be quiet on purpose, this section of the meeting, we do not necessarily interact with our speakers, so, thank you. All right, executive session, before I go there, is there anyone else here this evening that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to executive session. Who's going to do the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, and there will be no decision coming after the executive session or during the executive session, so the video portion of the meeting will terminate now, thank you very much.